All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's City of Cedar Falls City Council meeting for Monday, November 17th. I'll now call this meeting in order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hallbaker.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if willing and able, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. And I'll look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of regular meeting November 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Seeing none from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And we'll now move to public forums. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. If it is an item that's on the agenda tonight, please wait till that item later, otherwise any other items we can talk about now. So is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Just name the address, please.
Yes. David Deeds, 922 Mulberry Street, Waterloo. I'm here with Arlene Humble.
4007 East Park Road, State of Falls.
We're here on behalf of the Waterloo Regional Airport Board. We're both board members of the airport, and we'd like to just share some of the good news of things that have been happening at the airport, which is very much a regional asset for all of us across the Cedar Valley. We'd like to boil it down to this: It's close, it's quick, and it's connected. So if you take that away with you, close, quick, and connected. Right now, we're standing eight minutes away from your first flight. If you happen to live at Eric Road and Hudson Road, you're 11 minutes from your first flight. In other words, anywhere in Cedar Falls, you could be in 10 minutes or less essentially at your first flight, rather than driving for a solid hour-plus or two hours-plus. So keep that in mind as you're booking your next flights. Since June, we've had some great improvements to our air service provided by American Airlines. We now have dual-class aircraft with both first-class, main cabin extra, as well as regular coach seating available, Wi-Fi onboard, which the great thing is, it's a short flight, but you get to use their free entertainment, which is a great asset, great way to pass the time. So as you think about this, it's... Some of our other board members are Gwen Berry, Katie Su Song, Scott Voight, Chris Baring, Arlene, of course, and then Scott Cook, representing various constituencies from around the Cedar Valley. So one of the things that we sometimes hear is that you may not be price-competitive. Well, in fact, we are. If you think about it, in fact, I looked today, just a quick Google search, Waterloo for the week of Christmas, whether you're traveling out or you have friends or family coming back in, to consider Orlando was $37 cheaper, Miami was 65, Austin 29, Denver 55. Now, you can't guarantee flight and fares. We don't set those, the airlines do. So do at least check and consider that. We're great... It's great that we're back up to pre-pandemic levels in terms of our passenger embarkments, but the way we get attention of the airlines is to fill planes. They're big organizations, and communities that fill their planes are the ones who get more service. So a way for us to get more service here in the Cedar Valley is to help fill those planes. I'll give Arlene a second.
And I just want to say that the aircraft holds 70 people now, so it's a nice-sized aircraft, too. Also, if you can't find it one way, you know, your connection doesn't look good or something, you can check on going out of Cedar Rapids, then then finding... Renting a car on the way back or something, because if you're gone for a couple weeks, it still saves you money flying out of Waterloo and then just getting back or have somebody come and pick you up if it doesn't work. So, but it's a great aircraft. We've been selling it, and people have been really happy with it. I've flown it, and it's great. So fly Waterloo.
So if you could remember, it's close, it's quick, it's connected, and the next time you're booking, ask yourself how much your time is worth. Look forward to seeing you at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And thank you, just as board members. You know, a lot of work goes into that airport, and promoting it, working with the airline, and advocating for the needs here, so thank you, guys, for the work you put in. So is there anyone else for a public comment this evening? Just name the address, please.
Evening, TW. I'm the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. Just wanted to remind the folks of Cedar Falls that we exist. If you have any issues with human rights, whether it is a complaint regarding discrimination at your employer, within the city, public officials, any of those concerns, please reach out at human-rights@cedarfalls.com. Any questions you have regarding human rights, please let us know. My email is TW.ingham@cedarfalls.com. We're always here to answer hard questions, and there are a lot of hard questions. I promise, we've heard them all. Again, just reach out, we do exist, we want to help out everyone in Cedar Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ingo. Is there anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum and move on to staff updates. Director Shragi, I believe we have a few.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to provide a holiday schedule for you, so refuse collection. So with the holiday schedule, on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, the 28th, residents having their normal collection on Thursday should place their garbage out on Tuesday, November 25th, and residents that have their normal collection on Friday should place their garbage out on Wednesday, November 26th. The other update I have is a few roadway opening dates, or estimated dates for that matter. Last week, East Viking Road, so kind of in front of Discount Tire Menards area, that roundabout was opened up last Friday. West Viking Road on the West City Limits is planned to be open this Friday, end of the week. West 23rd Street is open late next week. Union Road will be the end of the first week in December, and then the last one would be Ridgeway Avenue is likely to be open the second week in December.
Perfect. Thank you, Director. I have a quick update as well, more for the public than us up here. We always talk about goal-setting as a very important time. If you're looking to kind of hear what priorities are coming up, get a chance to hear about that, but then also contact your council members if you have thoughts on what you'd like to see talked about. So our goal-setting meetings will be coming up here starting in December, so December 4th, 8th, and 17th are our three scheduled goal-setting sessions. So those are from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the evening over at the library or at the community center, excuse me, attached to the library. So for anyone looking to kind of get some insight on what the priorities will be next year, but also it's a chance for you to hear ahead of time some of those priorities, we use then those priorities to start setting the budget, come kind of the first of the year. So it's a good time, if you've got thoughts, ideas, and feedback you'd like to get to your council members and to myself for that process, invite you to come out. So otherwise, we will move on to special order of business. Item number two, cancellation of a public hearing to consider entering into an agreement for private development with River Place Properties 2 LC. Quick before we open up, background on this, we are still working on the development agreement, rather than continue to just push it, we just kind of figured we'd pull it off the agenda for now and then reset it once we get it under. So we're just taking it off for the sake of not continuing to have you guys push it out. So look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any conversation from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, all those... Excuse me, we need a... Yeah, we can do a voice vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Item number three, public hearing on a proposal to convey a portion of certain city-owned real estate located on Lot 1, West Viking Road, Industrial Park Phase 7, to Cedar Falls Utilities. Is there a motion to receive and file approved publications?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And staff comments will just be me. For this one, I think everyone's kind of aware of the project here. We're working with CFU on their new power generation facility out in Viking, so this is the final step to deed the land over to CFU. Any clarifying questions from council or anything at this time? All right, seeing none, we will look to public comment then, if anyone from the public would like to speak on this tonight. Just name the address, please.
Susan Abernathy. I live in New Hartford, but I do live on CFU lines. I'm the General Manager for Cedar Falls Utilities, and I have Mayor Beth Sonnison, our Board Chair, here with me. We want to take this time and opportunity to thank the city and city council for its longstanding partnership with CFU and the longstanding cooperation that we've had throughout the years, and some of that is exchanging property when it's for the better good of our community. This property, as you know, will be the site for the Viking Energy Center, which will utilize highly efficient reciprocating engines to produce power for our community. We will begin with two engines that will provide 36 megawatts of power, and it will be expandable up to eight engines. The Viking Energy Center will provide our community with resiliency, reliability, fuel flexibility, and low cost, local control of our power supply. To be clear, plentiful power is critical for this community, our industry, businesses, and our residents. So the Viking Energy Center is an essential part of that for our future. These engines will run off of natural gas, but it's important to know that they can be retrofitted relatively easily for some sort of renewable fuel in the future, including possibly hydrogen. The other great thing about this generation is that it will modulate beautifully with renewable energy, so when the wind quits blowing right away, we can power up these engines and provide power to our community. So it prevents blackouts in our community, we can be self-sufficient and lit up no matter what is happening in the rest of the grid, and it obviously has a positive financial impact to the city and our community in terms of future growth, jobs, taxes, the transfer that CFU provides to the city every year, and then also environmentally, it supports renewable energy on the market. So overall, this project will provide resiliency and reliability for generations to come, and by maintaining local ownership and control, we can keep the cost of power low for our community. So thank you very much for your continued cooperation and help with this project. We deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy.
Thank you.
And I know this has been a long-time project in the works, a lot of the planning and effort, so as you said, this isn't a once-every-type-of-year investment. This is a pretty significant investment in the future capacity for the city, so appreciate you and the Board of Trustees for all the work looking into this. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak tonight? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion on a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a quitclaim deed conveying title of certain city-owned real estate located at Lot 1, West Viking Road, Industrial Park Phase 7, to Cedar Falls Utilities. Is the motion approved?
Second.
And second? Any discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. And that moves us to item number four, public hearing on a proposal to convey a portion of Campus Street right of way south of West 23rd Street. Do we have motion to receive and file approved publications? So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And for this, for staff comments, we have Dr. Ben Claypool. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The conveyance proposed tonight is for the south limits of Campus Street, off of 23rd Street, and up here on this image, you can see it was the roadway of Campus Street that dead-ended. It's about 50% the Commons Building of UNI and then loading cul-de-sac area. When we were approaching UNI as a city, working on the 23rd Street documentations for right of way and eastwards on the project, this was one of the things that both parties wanted to get cleaned up. We've been through P&amp;Z approval, we vacated this as a council, and this public hearing is just for the consideration to actually convey it to the university, to the Board of Regents.
Any clarifying questions from council? All right, thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
That will move to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a quitclaim deed conveying a portion of Campus Street right of way south of West 23rd Street to the Board of Regents, State of Iowa. So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? And with that, roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. That takes us to Old Business, item number five. I'll look for a motion to pass ordinance number 3128, amending ordinance number 3097, and designating the multi-residential urban revitalization area for the Cedar Falls Multi-Residential Urban Revitalization Plan for the City of Cedar Falls, Amendment Number One, upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any conversation from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number six, pass ordinance number 3129, amending Chapter 7, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances relative to amendments, National Electrical Code adoption, and National Electrical Code amendments upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
And any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3130, amending the zoning map by removing approximately 0.15 acres of land located at 2309 Main Street from R4 Multi-Residence District to C2 Commercial District upon its third and final consideration. Do we have motion to approve?
Second.
Motion seconded, any conversation from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3131, amending Chapter 16, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to fireworks upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number nine, pass ordinance number 3132, amending Chapter 2, administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to powers and duties upon its third and final consideration.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item 10, pass ordinance number 3133, amending Chapter 20 subdivisions and Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parkland dedication, including establishing a process, methods, and formula for parkland dedication, updating definitions, and establishing rules for land suitability and location upon its second consideration.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item 11, pass ordinance number 3134, amending the zoning map by removing approximately 4.85 acres of land located north of West Ridgeway Avenue and east of South Union Road from A1 Agricultural District to M1P Planned Light Industrial District upon its second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number 12, pass ordinance number 3135, amending ordinances number 1923, 2122, 2461, 2696, 2785, 2923, 2953, and 3086, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the amended Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by or for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and Dyke New Hartford Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Area 2025 removal parcels upon second consideration.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council?
I wasn't listening, could you repeat it?
Yeah, I knew you were going to say that.
Actually, the next one is pretty much the same thing, so I can just, when we get there, you'll...
A smirk from Kevin does it for me. That's good.
It's a good day when the lawyer is smirking. Anything from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. I can try to abbreviate this one. Item 13, pass ordinance number 3136, amending ordinance number 2926, providing that general property taxes be levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and Hudson Community School District, and other taxing entities, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area, Amendment Number One to the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan upon its second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, seeing none, roll-call vote, please. Anyone here remember the days when you had to read in class? And you're like, when's this skill going to be valuable to me?
Found it.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Moves us to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that it be considered separately. Are there any requests from council? All right, seeing none from council, any from the public? Seeing none from the public, I'll look for a motion to approve items 14 through 17 of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. That moves us to the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll-call vote on a single motion unless asked to be considered separately. Are there any requests from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Number 32, please.
32? Okay.
Um, 39, please, Mr. Mayor. I assume just pulling 39 is probably good for the 39 and 40, right?
Um, let's see, 40, we'll probably pull it just because it's contingent on the previous.
Sure.
I think that's the only one contingent, yeah. All right, any others? All right, any from the public? All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve items 18 through 45 of the resolution calendar excluding items 39, or excuse me, 32, 39, and 40.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and roll-call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Takes us to item 32, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a public service agreement with Northeast Iowa Food Bank relative to emergency funding in an amount up to $25,000. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and council?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just appreciate your efforts and that of staff to find a way to come up with $25,000 here, hopefully pending the approval of this item. Don't have to tell anybody that times are tough for everybody in this community, in this nation right now. Having recently had some volunteer exposure at the food bank, I can tell you that the need is very much there, and I know we've got the director of the food bank here tonight as well, so hopefully we can get some comments from her, but just wanted to give kudos to staff. I think this is very, very much a needed situation.
Thank you, councilor. And some context for, I know us up here, because this was something that came up in a recent conversation with the food bank, City of Waterloo and the county, this was and-for-the-public conversation, requests from us, Waterloo and the county, to look at providing up to $100,000 in joint funding to address some of the short-term immediate needs with the SNAP program funding on hold, but also just an increasing need, we've been seeing over the last several months especially, but over the last several years, and as well as some federal funding that did not come through for the food bank. They've had a gap in some of the operational funding. I know the state did step up and had some matching funds, and so we'll be, this would be in partnership with the county and with the City of Waterloo to kind of issue a challenge to the community to help match some of that support to the food bank. And again, we do have the director of the food bank here, if anybody would like to ask any questions. Is there any other discussion from council, or would you mind if I brought Bar up to... Please, it's right there, if you would.
Good evening, Barb Prather, Northeast Iowa Food Bank. Thank you very much for this... You haven't voted yet, so thank you very much for bringing this up. For the last, you know, ever since probably 2022, when COVID relief money started going away that supported families in general, our need has gone up, and food insecurity has not gone away. Four of the programs that we have focus on kids. The last six weeks have been really tough on people in our communities. Pantry services, not only through the Cedar Valley Food Pantry, but throughout our 16 counties, and here in Blackhawk County, are up 50% the first two weeks in November from what it was in the first two weeks of October. The community has always supported us, and we ask that they continue to support us, but having this show of support from our government bodies really does help us make a difference in the lives of people who, through no fault of their own, need a little extra help.
And I know to one of your points in the discussion, and something I think is good for the community to know, is the food banks cannot replace SNAP benefits. I think this is something to try and help with additional need right now. I think this is something to try and help with additional need right now, but the amount of, I believe it's for every meal the food bank provides, it's about nine meals.
Yep, for every meal, the, one meal the food banks provide, SNAP provides nine meals. We will never make up the difference as much as we try, and you know, we're here to meet the gap that's already there because government doesn't support full, full benefits for everybody, but that's where communities come in and fill the gap, and that's what we're here for.
Thank you, Director.
Yep, thank you very much.
Is there any questions from council, while we have Barb here? All right, yeah, thank you for all the work.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I have one question for you. So how can the public, is it better to donate food, time, money, all the above?
All the above. I will say, next week is our annual holiday distribution, where we're planning for about five thousand families who are, have received food from the food bank to come in, so there's opportunities to volunteer there, but just ongoing volunteerism during the, you know, during the day, evenings, whoever it is, whether it's a, you know, a service club, a business, whatever that is, we can always use volunteers to help. You know, money we leverage to bring in food through our donated sources and through the Feeding America Network, and then local food drives just help fill those gaps for immediate needs.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you councillor, and I believe Waralu did pass, they had their meeting just for us, they passed their funding, and then the county will be meeting tomorrow to consider their portion of it as well, so. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you ma'am clerk, the motion carries. That moves us to item number thirty-nine, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an amended and substituted developmental procedures agreement and RP master plan amendment for Wild Horse Ridge subdivision. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Motion seconded, and councillor?
Um, I just wanted to pull this item. I know, I believe we all received maybe an email or two on this, and I don't know, I've had a chance to watch the last couple, planning and zoning meetings, and catch up on that, and there was some good conversation from community members and neighbors in that area. I thought there was good conversation from the planning and zoning commissioner, commissioners. What I take away, the main concern, first I want to applaud the good things, so I think what I learned is the connectivity in that new development, or that, in this completion, I guess.
Subdivision?
Yeah, the subdivision is much better because of our new, what is that officially called? The connectivity?
Connectivity standards in our subdivision.
Yes. Where we've got maybe an additional road to the west that's gonna connect the neighborhoods, there's not just neighborhoods that are like isolated by themselves, maybe better sidewalk connectivity in blocks that are long, that would help people to get to the proposed green space, and, and I think that's the other main part that I took from those conversations was the size of the park, because in the past, and correct me if I'm saying something incorrectly, but in the past, we didn't have maybe a very nailed-down requirement for park space, but now we do. And so, this space that's going to be allotted in this proposed master plan is up to, while it doesn't take into account the other areas that have already been developed, it does take into account this specific subdivision. And so, what I heard from folks is there's concern that, you know, it's not as large as maybe it could be, if, if that had been in place years ago when that area was being developed. And I just want to kind of make acknowledgement of that, I don't know, maybe there's folks here that want to speak to that. It is kind of a, I get what folks are saying, because I think who wouldn't want a bigger park? But also, I don't know that we really have a leg to stand on to, you know, this is, this is the formula, this is what we can do now. So I just didn't want to pass it, like, without making an explanation, I want people to know that I am aware of the concern. I, in a, in a perfect world, that it would be bigger than, I think it's like two and a half acres or something that's proposed, but I don't know that we can get to a bigger space at this time, so I just kind of wanted to acknowledge that I've heard people's concerns and not just, you know, sweep it through with a consent calendar.
Thank you councillor.
Or sorry, resolution calendar.
It's close.
But one of the calendars.
Thank you again, is there any other discussion? Yep?
There is a bit of a negative with the new development requirements, when we went from a right-of-way of sixty feet to sixty-six, we lost, the developer lost four lots that could have been developed for them, so that cost of those four lots had to be spread out amongst all the other lots, driving up the price for those. If we went back to our sixty feet, there could have been four more, and still had the other development requirements there, but, so it's not all necessarily positive. So we could have a bigger park.
Thank you councillor. I will say quick, just, this is the first time, this, I think this is our first development that's gone through with our new park zoning in place, so I know that it's been a process, anytime you put something new in, especially this project was kind of in the process as we got those requirements in place, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, the developer, the residents, for voicing your concerns openly, but also, you know, working through when we came to the final plans, and I think it helps us make sure going forward, we're including some of these park spaces and getting it in there, so I know anytime you put something new in place, it causes some friction, so just thank you to everyone in that process for working through it newly for the first time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to kind of echo and make sure it's, that's why what we've, the requirement that we have in place now, going forward, now this hopefully won't happen, where there's a large piece of development that doesn't have any park space, because we've made it crystal clear.
Yep. Thank you councillors, any additional conversation from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Just name and address, please.
Jeremy Swanson, nine zero four Cherrywood Drive. So, I am one of the individuals who reached out to all of you, and just in case you didn't have an opportunity to fully, you know, read the email, or, or had any questions about what I, I had to say, I've got a little something. So, um, if your kids are like mine, they love being outside, and study after study shows that the importance of outdoor activity, especially over screen time and social media. One study suggests that children have better physical, mental, and emotional health, and even improved learning, when they play outside, and as an educator, I can see the dangers of kids spending too much time on their screens, and I see the students blossom when they spend time outside, especially during outdoor recreation activities. That being said, thank you for working on passing the new ordinance that requires green space and developments. Unfortunately, due to the lack of such an ordinance, so many of the neighborhoods in this part of town are missing these green pieces, green, green spaces. They include the new development going across from Wild Horse, West Fork Crossing, Cherrywood Acres, The Ledges, Quail Ridge, Lexington, Paddington Drive, Windwood, The Ridges, and Royal Oaks. None of these have green spaces, and green space is a commodity that once it's gone, we're not getting it back. Therefore, I believe the city council should require the developers to create a green space that would adequately satisfy the needs of the entire neighborhood. A coworker who lives in Wild Horse has told me that they requested green space several times over the years and were denied. A concern comes for the families who live there currently, but also for the hundred-plus additional homes that will be coming over the next ten years. Currently, some of the other neighborhood parks are much larger than the proposed Wild Horse Park. Orchard Hill Park is eight acres, Pfeiffer is ten, Holmes is five, Lookout Park is four, and Place to Play Park is five. As a council, I see it as your responsibility to the citizens of this wonderful, wonderful community, not to the profit of the out-of-town developers. Twenty or more years from now, no one is gonna look back and say, gosh, I wish we had smaller green spaces. This green space has the potential to be something truly wonderful for the entire community, just like Place to Play Park, or Big Woods, or the new Whitewater Park. As the city continues to move in this direction, it only makes sense to add large, if not huge, green spaces as well. Additionally, and I'm not sure if this is part of this or the next one, but I would love to see a revised version for phase ten of the development. This part of the development currently lies on, on the undeveloped and still natural part of the pond. On a recent walk there, I observed many native plants and in on sleeve some invasive ones too. I also saw evidence of wildlife, including animal trails, tracks, and slides into the pond. This area is clearly already home to non-human species, and we should keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Is there anyone else for a public comment this evening? Just name and affiliation, please.
Larry Kuzman, Klapsutter, Garber, fifty-one oh six Nordic Drive, on behalf of the developer Midwest Development. One of the big things I want to bring up is, like she said, like, with this new portion of developments, a new preliminary plat and everything else like that, with the park space that we're providing, the, currently, the parkland ordinance is not codified, so we wouldn't, by rights, need to do it, but the developer decided to do it, because they understand the concerns of the public and stuff like that. So, but, you wouldn't expect a different developer, if they were developing this, to put in twice the amount that they're supposed to for all the other homeowners that have already purchased their lots. And they don't have to pay for the park space, but the new property owners do, so. What is your, what would be that remedy? Would it be the city purchases part of it and does an assessment? You know, so, there's a lot of different ways you'd go with it, but I think the fact that they came up with as much as they did was pretty good, I think, so. That's all I got. If you guys have any questions, I can answer any of those, so.
Thank you for making the time to be here.
Yeah, no problem.
Does it, while we have any clarifying questions for the developer, while? All right, thank you. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, with that, we'll close the public comments. One thing I did want to speak to, in fairness to both points, I do think that's why we're putting these policies in place, to make sure going forward, we do these things, because it is hard, once a development's built, they have to spread the cost over the new homes to be built, and it'd be hard for us to go back and try to assess that cost to the old homeowners, so I do know, this is an area of town we definitely see as underserved in the park space, and I know that's been a big conversation of, what other methods we can try within that whole kind of western district, try to find ways to bring some additional park space, knowing it is very much needed. So, don't think we can solve it all through this one development, but it's definitely noted that it's a very underserved area across that whole western side of town, so thank you for championing that, and thank you guys for working on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I just make one more comment?
Yeah.
I do appreciate that the developer, you know, is, is bringing this two and a half acres to us. I will say though, I hope at some point we can recognize that green space is an amenity for the neighborhood, so when you're building and developing and selling houses, I would think that that would make your sales to people and families an easier sell. So it's, it's not just a, it's really for the good of all of us. So, I'm very appreciative, I'm appreciative that we have a much clearer policy. You know, I think everybody has the concern that we'd be the best we can be for all of us, and, and I, I, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you ma'am clerk, the motion carries. That moves us to item forty, resolution approving the preliminary plat of Wild Horse Ridge seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth additions contingent upon the previous item. We have a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Motion seconded, and any conversation from council?
Mr. Mayor, a question. If known, what would be the time sequence by the time you'd get to the tenth addition? Ballpark, I guess.
If everything goes as planned, they're looking at twenty-thirty-three, twenty-thirty-four.
Okay.
For it to be all built out, so.
So, given the comment from a previous speaker about all the wildlife and whatnot that's going over there, if there'd be an opportunity for individuals, nonprofits, somebody to maybe buy some of those lots, or do something?
I would assume so, if they could work with the developer for something like that.
Yeah, maybe the developer would say, God, we make so much money, we could donate a few lots to the city.
I love your optimism.
That's a good hope.
I'm just throwing that out there.
No, it's...
I mean, you're in for a profit.
I, I'm sure the developer would be willing to talk to people about stuff like that, so...
Sounds like it's right by a body of water and nature and...
Doesn't take much for any of those people to reach out to them, so. So, yeah.
Appreciate open conversation.
Thank you councillor. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Just name and address, please.
Craig Fairbanks, four oh five Spruce Hills Drive. Being that this is the first one, the first park thing to come through, does this meet the requirements of the, of the policy that's been passed or not? That's the only question I have.
Yep, and this one does, Director, I don't know if you want to speak to it quickly, but...
I believe technically it's just slightly shy, but only very slightly, I don't have an exact number for you, but it's two point two five acres.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, bring back council, no further conversation, roll call vote please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you ma'am clerk, the motion carries. That takes us to ordinances, item number forty-six, passing ordinance amending chapter twenty-three traffic and motor vehicles of the code of ordinances relative to fines for parking violations, impoundment, and immobilization of vehicles and parking enforcement districts described upon its first consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Motion seconded, and any conversation from council?
Mr. Mayor?
What you got?
Just wondering, on the fee for removing the boot, we did talk about that, the last time we went through this, that we might increase that? Mr. Birdie, was that seventy-five already?
Marcy, would you mind?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Marcy.
It's currently fifty.
Fifty. And was there any consideration to go higher with that, because that was one of the things that we thought we could do?
I believe we talked about a possible tiering program, that if, like, the first time you were booted, it would be one price, and if you were a reefer, then it would increase each time.
Would that be under the scope of this, to do something like that, or do it when we do the rest of the fees in May or June, something like that?
I would think probably with the fees at that time, because that's when the, the booting fee would be put on the fee schedule.
That's the fee schedule.
Okay.
So we can take a look at that then?
Okay, make a note. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, thank you Marcy. Any other discussion, questions from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you ma'am clerk, the motion carries. Takes us forty-seven bills and claims, we have a motion to allow bills and claims for November seventeenth.
So moved, second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you ma'am clerk, any council updates or announcements this evening? If not, didn't have any submitted referrals, any press ring referrals? If not otherwise, that will take us item forty-eight, executive session, look for a motion from the executive session to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation, or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one five one C.
So moved, second.
Motion seconded, and requires a roll call vote please.
Sorry, it's frozen. Okay, sorry.
Oh, it's still on bills and claims?
Okay, now you can go.
Okay. We voted twice for bills and claims.
Pay them bills.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor. All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. The motion carries. So we will now go to Executive Session. We will come back here to adjourn the meeting after that, but no further business will be discussed after that point, so you're welcome to stay if you would like. Otherwise, thank you everyone for coming, have a good night, and we will see you next time.